Good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the Wednesday, May 4th, 2001 Reno City Planning Commission meeting. If I could get everybody to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary or Madam Secretary, whomever, we have roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, you may. Kevin Wieske.
Present.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Max Haltem.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Patty Egan.
Here.
Jim Newberg.
Here.
Dennis Romeo. You do have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
And she doesn't get it till next month.
Next on our agenda is approval of minutes of April 7th, 2011. Before I ask for a motion, I would like consideration from the council because of some corrections to the meeting minutes that we consider a motion for continuation and approval in our June meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Romeo?
I move to continue approval of the April minutes to our June meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second from Commissioner Haltem.
Commissioner Haltem, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda item, on our agenda is item number four, City Council Liaison Reports. Do we have any reports today? Hearing and seeing none, I will close City Council Liaison Reports and open up public comment. Public comment is limited to no more than three minutes on items that do not appear on the agenda and/or items for which no public comment period was afforded. The public may comment upon agenda items by submitting a request to speak form to the clerk at the time of the meeting. Mr. Secretary, do we have any requests to speak forms under public comment?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak under public comment for an item that is not agendized? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment. Go to item number six on our agenda. This evening's unfinished business, public hearings, LDC 10-00051, Bella Vista Ranch. If the applicant or applicant's representative will please come forward, introduce himself, you will have 15 minutes to discuss your project.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, for the record, Randy Walter with Places Consulting. I'm here representing the Cyane group that's had the proposal before you. We've requested a continuance for one more time. Next time we come back, I promise we'll actually make a presentation on this project. We're hoping to have at least a couple of different alternatives with the fire department to present to you also at that same time, and hopefully we can move this project forward. So, that's where we are.
Randy, thank you very much. With that, I will ask staff for any comments.
Vern Claude, Senior Planner, we have nothing to add.
Thank you, Vern. Is there anyone in the public here this evening who would like to have their statement, put a statement on record for this agendized item that will probably receive a motion for continuation? At this time, I would like to ask consideration from fellow commissioners, one of you, to consider making a motion instead of asking for a continuation to our June meeting, that because this has come up four or five times already now before us, and each time asking for a continuation, that we go and put this on our July agenda. And at our July agenda, we go ahead and hear this project, whether the applicant or staff is ready, and proceed to move forward with it. This has taken up a lot of our time.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Romeo?
I concur with that. I would like to make a motion continuing this till July. It's been a hardship on several people showing up month after month. I'd like to have this moved specifically to our July meeting at that time to be heard. So with that being said, the case of LDC 10-00051, Bella Vista Ranch, Phase Two, I would like to continue this to our July meeting, at which time it will be heard.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second by Jim Newberg.
Thank you, Commissioner Newberg. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, do we have the date for the July meeting so that it's clear on the record?
It looks like it will be the 7th of July.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll amend my motion to be specific to the 7th of July.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo.
I'll amend my second.
Thank you, Commissioner Newberg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to item number seven, public hearings. First on our agenda is LDC 11-00051, Umpqua Bank, 3490 South Virginia Street. The applicant's representative will please come forward and introduce herself in one second, please. I would like to ask for disclosures from the Planning Commission. Is there any disclosures this evening? I do have a disclosure. I have a personal account at an Umpqua Bank store. It does not happen to be this one, but I feel that I can be fair and balanced in listening to this agenda. So we will move forward. The applicant's representative will have 15 minutes. If you will introduce yourself, please.
For the record, Cynthia Albright, StanTech Consulting, representing the Regional Transportation Commission. I'm going to have to ask Bob if we could have the overhead projector. First, I'd like to thank staff for all the assistance they've given us in processing this application. With me here tonight is David Funk, the president of the bank, Umpqua Bank, right here, and several other notable folks who are equally as important as Mr. Funk as Lori Morse and Melanie Bloom, both of Umpqua Bank. Is that the biggest you can make it?
You need to slide your stuff down.
Slide it.
Okay, we can zoom out.
Let's do this. There we go. There we go. I believe that we're all aware that the Regional Transportation Commission is widening Moana Lane between I-580 and South Virginia Street to alleviate some congestion. The design of the widening actually includes a proposed of what we call a free right turn lane for the northbound traffic that's going to connect to the Q Jump Pipe Pass Acceleration Lane on Virginia Street. The graphic that I have up before you shows the existing pavement section, if you will, on Moana at the intersection of Virginia Street, and the Umpqua Bank parcel sits right here on the northwest corner, or northeast corner, excuse me. With the widening improvement, you can see how we've significantly encroached upon Umpqua Bank's property. We've basically taken off the entire corner here. We have what we call an island here, so the design includes a free right turn for the traffic heading northbound, and this is what we've called the acceleration lane because there's a Q Jump project also on Virginia Street where the buses have, they're able to jump forward ahead of the other traffic, and that additional right-of-way off the front of the property gives the RTC buses the width that they need in order to accelerate into that lane. A total of about 5,270 square feet is actually going to be removed from the Umpqua Bank property on both the south and the west borders of the property where they're currently landscaped all along the corner there to make way for all of these roadway improvements. The design impacts the Umpqua Bank site in such a way as to require the variances that we've applied for in three different locations. One of them is to request a variance to the actual setback on Virginia Street. The city's code requires a great deal more setback than we're able to provide. The second is to reduce the landscaped area from a requirement of 15% to 14.1%, and then to allow for a reduction in the landscaped area along the parking lot. We typically require five feet of setback in the parking lot for the property lines so that we can plant in there, so we can screen the automobiles. Well, because the site itself sort of pinches in in this particular area, we're not able to provide that entire five feet, so we'd like to construct a three-foot stacked stone wall to buffer the parking area for a distance of about 25 feet all along the property on this corner. And I have a map to show you. You can see, based on the aerial photography of the bank site today, and then that light green area is the area that we're actually going to re-landscape, and we're going to remove this whole corner and this frontage area here and put it all back into this area. And the area that we need to construct that little wall is right here for about 25 feet because we just don't have the distance there in order to put that five-foot setback. The landscaping that is on the east side of the property will remain, as well as the landscaping on the corner. So at the end of the day, because the site had plenty of landscaping, now by removing what we're removing, we're only impacting it by .9%. So, Umpqua's designers that they have in San Francisco really looked at this site in such a way to make absolutely sure that with this proposed project that they could still have adequate circulation through the property. Cars will be able to come in off Moana Lane and then come in out off onto South Virginia and head northbound. So there will no longer be left turns out of that driveway across traffic. They won't be able to make that movement. And based on the site configuration, RTC and Umpqua Bank representatives have worked closely together with their designers to make sure that this site configuration works well for them, and it clearly does. I presented our application request to the Central Ward Two Neighborhood Advisory Board. We were very well received. David Vile can attest to that. I proposed, I showed them all of the mitigations, and they were completely happy with the proposed mitigations. I would like to show you the Umpqua Bank folks. In addition to, or as part of this project, because this project is moving forward in this manner, they're actually going to make this a flagship store, and I'm going to let the bank president talk about that. But this is an architectural renovation or illustration of what they propose to do at that site. So in addition to totally redoing the landscaping there, we're actually going to completely change the building facade. So I'm going to turn it over to David, and that kind of concludes my piece of the presentation.
Thank you, Cynthia.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, my name's Dave Funk, Senior Vice President, Regional Manager for Umpqua Bank here in Nevada. Longtime banker here in the city, going on 49 years. I want to thank you for your positive consideration of this request tonight. This store that we have at South Virginia Moana is now our largest store here in northern Nevada. We have three locations here in the Reno area and one at Incline Village. This is now our largest store. We would like to remain at this location. This variance will certainly allow us to be able to do that. Our customers love the area, love the access to get in and out of there, and the design you see in front of you will literally make this our flagship store here in northern Nevada. It'll provide computer access inside to our customers, that they will be able to do that. Our coffee stands that we're so famous for provided in each of our stores, and we think that will make a wonderful addition and site at that location there on South Virginia and Moana Lane. So we thank you very much for your consideration of this, and if you have any questions of me at this time, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Dave, thank you. We will go ahead and call you if we need you to answer any questions. Thank you. Staff.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. The staff can make the applicable findings and recommends approval of the variance.
Thank you very much, Nathan. Robert, can we have lights, please, and maybe if you can, is that mic turned up all the way? Can it be turned up just a little bit more? Thank you. You can try it. With that, I will open up public comment for this project. I had one request to speak for, from Mr. Funk, who has already spoken. Is there anyone else here in the audience this evening who wishes to speak on this agenda item? Robert, are there any other requests to speak forms?
No, sir, there aren't.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment. I will bring it back to the Commission for questions. Commissioner Haltem, do you have a question? No? Mr. Romeo?
I do have one for the applicant, Cynthia. Is the applicant in agreement with the staff report and with the conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other further questions or motion? Commissioner Egan?
Commissioner Egan, in the case LDC 11-00051, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variance request subject to conditions.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Woosley?
Commissioner Woosley, I second it, and I can make the findings.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Next on our agenda this evening, item number two, LDC 08-00189, amendment to WAMP-DRCC plan areas. Nathan, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. This is a request for a master plan amendment on approximately 3 1/3 acre from the downtown Reno Regional Center Plan to the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan. During the adoption of the Wells Avenue Plan, several members from the stakeholders group that worked towards developing that plan in 2007 requested that council extend the boundaries to include this two-block area illustrated in the dotted line here. You recall, 2007 was the peak of the real estate boom, and the primary reasoning for adopting the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan was to make sure the infill development that was happening was keeping in character with the existing neighborhood. And so rather than postpone the adoption of the plan at that time, several members of the group requested that the city council go on and later initiate an amendment to include this area, this two-block area. City council has since directed staff to analyze and submit a proposal for including this area for inclusion into the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan, and this will replace the downtown Reno Regional Center Plan land use designation adopted in 2006 and return it, and bring it into the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan. In order to preserve the continuity of this corridor, the downtown Reno Regional Center Plan, and its connection with the Mill Street Transit Corridor along Ryland here, this is the area, the transit corridor that connects to downtown Reno, this area in blue is currently and would, as proposed with staff's recommendation, would continue to be the downtown regional center plan land use designation, providing continuity along the Mill Street Transit Corridor to Renown Medical Center and Grant'sure Resort. This is anticipated to be a heavily trafficked, heavily developed area in keeping with the transit corridor plans, and so that's why we recommended that, from an urban design perspective, we couldn't recommend including all of this, although it's certainly within your purview to make your evaluations. Our recommendation would be to draw along the lines, this is an alley along here, and then this is a parcel line which will connect to the boundaries of the Mill Street Transit The intention by moving to the Wells Avenue Plan would be reaching council's objective in creating, ensuring that these areas, that this area identified in the maroon solid line here would be further developed in keeping with Wells Avenue Neighborhood character. That concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Nathan, thank you. At this time, I would like to open public comment, and we have several requests to speak forms. Before we do that, can we go ahead and have disclosures? Commissioner Romeo, I'll let you start.
I've had several emails, phone conversations, and personal conversations with both sides involved in this issue.
Thank you. I too have had several emails forwarded to me. Commissioner Kaufman?
I also have had several emails forwarded.
Commissioner Woosley?
I as well have had several emails.
Commissioner Egan?
I have also had the emails.
Commissioner Newberg?
Emails.
Commissioner Haltem?
Couple of emails and a nice telephone conversation with a supporter.
Thank you. Okay. Now that we're done with disclosures, we will move on to public comment. Have several who would like to speak. Jason, which one is? We have several that would like to speak, and more than several who have filled out comment cards that do not wish to speak. Marilyn, question for you, please. Do we need to read into the record the names of those who have filled out a form requesting not to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Woosley, I'm going to let you do that before we start calling names.
Okay. In favor of is Wendy Lang. In favor of Charlotte Eckmeyer. In favor of Karen Feigl, and if I mispronounce, I'm sorry. In favor, Jane Overly. In favor, Kathleen Durham. In favor of Oscar Delato. In favor of Frederick E. Slado, or Slado. In favor of Mike Von Houghton. In favor of Anthony Anderson. In favor of Sylvia Bangert. In favor of Rosalie Powell. And in favor of Tony Zaki, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. First, I will call up Griff Durham, who would like to speak and is in favor of Griff. Following Griff will be Barry Schuster. Griff, you will have three minutes, and if you will introduce yourself for the record, please.
For the record, my name is Griff Durham. I'm a 40-plus-year resident of the Wells Edition. My residence is at 271 Thomas Street, three blocks south of the subject area. I'm also a property owner in the subject area. I have rentals at 337 Wheeler. I was a, I'm a founding member of the West of Wells Neighborhood Group, and I participated in the development of the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan. During the meeting, we realized, I realized too late that the area, this area south of Ryland was not included in the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan. I had assumed it was because I felt that was the natural and historical boundary of the area. I was one of those who requested the change because I didn't feel Stewart Street was a logical transition from the residential to downtown. I argued for Ryland as a natural and historical boundary, partly because the Wells Edition, the northern boundary of the Wells Edition when it was brought into the city in the first decade of the 19th century, or the 20th century, was Ryland Street. This is the Wells Edition. You can see Ryland Street, it was, Scott can tell you, was something else at the time. Furthermore, it is, it was a political boundary until, well, until the last election cycle. You can see the northern boundary of the precinct is Ryland, continues through. Our group also, the West of Wells Neighborhood Group, considers this area the island. It's bounded by Wells on the east, Holcomb on the west, Ryland on the north, and Vassar on the south. I know that doesn't hold much sway, but it's important. What we're opposed to is this sort of thing, this sort of blockbusting that has occurred in our neighborhood 30 years ago. This is across the street from me, and since these were, these apartment buildings were put in at the time when this was zoned for one unit per thousand square feet. The apartment building on the right has nine units on a 7,000-square-foot lot. The one on the left has eight units on a 7,000-square-foot lot, and yet the city allowed them These are on the same block. Okay, my time's up. Thank you for hearing me out.
Griff, thank you very much. Next, Barry Schuster. Following Barry will be Jerry Van Horton. Barry, you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Barry Schuster. I am a resident of the Wells Avenue Neighborhood. I don't actually own property in the block that's in question, but I do live downstream off of Wheeler Avenue, so I do feel that what happens in this block does affect me. As a resident of the neighborhood, I identify that block as part of my neighborhood. You can see Stewart Park is right here. This is our only park. The next park that we have in the neighborhood is over here. So Stewart Park is a really important neighborhood resource. Right now, the northern boundary of the Wells Avenue Plan, only between Holcomb and Wells is down at Stewart Street, and then you can see here as you head east of Wells, it goes up to Ryland. That's because the downtown plan stops at Wells Avenue, and the Mill Street Todd Corridor starts at Wells and goes east. So the downtown plan chose Stewart Street as its southern boundary, and the Mill Street Todd Plan chose Ryland as its southern boundary. So it created kind of, I don't know, it looks like a bite is taken out of that edge right there. What I really want to, my main point is that that block is not just a block. It's the gateway to our neighborhood. It's a very important block, and our neighborhood has been so devastated by incompatible infill that unfortunately that's what people think of when they think of the Wells Avenue Neighborhood. In this area west of Wells, we have, you know, homes from 1902, 1908, 1910, extremely important historical structures, architecturally and historically. There are, in this block in question, there are a number of homes, you know, built in 1912, 1914. The primary goal of the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan, if you've read the issue number one, is to protect neighborhood character. And I believe that the goals of the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan and the goals of the downtown plan are so drastically different that Stewart Street is not a logical division point between the two plan areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Next is Jerry Van Horton, who is in opposition too, and following Jerry will be Dagny Stapleton.
First thing I'd do, I'd like to make-
Sir, can I ask you to state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Jerry Van Horton.
Thank you.
First thing I'd like to do is request that the staff recommendation on this project be rescinded, and I've got the causes all written down here for each of you members. The process was started by two people in the neighborhood, and Nathan called a meeting that it was attended by four people. Only two of them was residents or owners in the neighborhood, and he felt that was- and he felt that was enough that he could use that to go forward and make a recommendation on the neighborhood. I'm also giving you one more handout here that shows the current position of the zoning, and that's what this is really about. They're not really changing neighborhoods, they're trying to rezone the whole two-block area. There's only forty-three homeowners in this property. It would've been very simple for the city to contact these homeowners and find out whether or not they really wanted it to be rezoned. This is all about zoning, it has nothing to do with anything else. The characters of the neighborhoods within that part of the downtown and that part of Wells are all the same. But the rezoning, right now, we have clear borders. If we, if we do this, you could tell from the map, originally, this obvious case of gerrymandering, that's why I even found out about it, because they did it all this zigzag in there. Right now, we have fifty-foot buffers and maximum of 150-foot buffers. What we're going to come down to is commercial smack up against residential with no buffer at all, and industrial, a power plant up against residential with only a 22-foot alley separating them. In the California Avenue District, we got thirteen straight blocks. This is a straight line of the north side of California and Stewart being the M2 separation from the residential. All of a sudden, in the last two blocks, we're going to gerrymander this and change that. Right now, we have, in that two-block area, we have a true mixed-use area. We've got neighborhood, commercial, neighborhood, nonprofits, home office, single-family, multifamily housing. With all those having the proper separation, this will kill all of that separation. The, right now, you know who your neighbor is, you know what their zoning is, it's just like yours. All of a sudden, this is going to change all of that. We're going to create a lot of things, like the nonprofits and the businesses and things, are all of a sudden going to be nonconforming uses and restrict the use of the property. And the one where there's residents going to be with just a fence line before you get to the commercial is going to restrict the commercial property because of the way it's related to the to the residential. There, there has never been notices, proper notices, and two people has investigated this whole thing. The people you said that favor, none of them told you whether that they own property or residents of these areas.
Thank you, Jerry. Dagny? Following Dagny will be Scott Powell.
Hi, good evening. Dagny Stapleton, for the record. I just want to say real quick, just officially, that this was initiated by a whole group of people from the neighborhood, not two, with support from city council, so just to get that on the record and to correct that. I am a property owner of 331 and 327 Wheeler Avenue, a duplex that is within the area in question. My proper, my property zoning would change if this boundary change is approved. I live at my property, and I'm in strong support of the boundary change. I was also a stakeholder in the development of the Wells Avenue Plan and co-founder and co-organizer of the West of Wells Neighborhood Group. I speak on behalf of myself as a property owner and also many other residents who support this change who live and own property. There are a number of property owners who are in the subject area who are in favor of this. From a planning perspective, I believe that Stewart Street, the current boundary between the downtown plan and Wells Plan, is not the most optimum transition point between these two types of zoning. Stewart Street is a residential street with a family-oriented park, our only neighborhood park, or one of two, as Barry showed you, the only one in the immediate neighborhood. The downtown plan, as you know, has a higher density, has higher density requirements and is zoned commercial. Ryland, one block to the north, is a busy commercial thoroughfare, on the other side of which the downtown, true downtown core really begins. We think the compromise of having the suggested boundary change along the alleys just south of Ryland is the best solution, and we would create a better transition and buffer between these two zoning types. Here are some of the impacts of leaving the boundary as-is. It would be a disincentive to preserve the historic homes on this block. The existing minimum density, maximum density requirements and commercial zoning would motivate developers to tear down the homes to build more dense residential or commercial-oriented properties. Over the years of development occurs that is consistent with the current zoning, what would be created is an abrupt change in the character of the neighborhood that would happen along Stewart Residential Street. The Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan creates design standards that are consistent with the current neighborhood character and limits commercial uses, though it does include, it is mixed-use and it is multifamily, so the current offices and commercial uses and the nonprofit would still be conforming uses, even if they came back into the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan, so, because it is mixed-use. We believe that this change is consistent with the findings that you guys are supposed to make or as the planning commission. We believe the change ensures the protection of existing neighborhoods as well, as well as ensures an adequate supply of housing, including affordable housing, because there's still multifamily properties. It would still be zoned multifamily, so it's still opportunity to build multifamily properties and apartments and traditionally more affordable housing, which we do have in this neighborhood and are happy to maintain through the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan. In addition, I'd like to bring to your attention a personal financial impact that the current zoning has on my property. I bought my property before it was rezoned commercial. Now that it is zoned commercial, because I have a residential use, it is nearly impossible for me to get a loan or refi, hard enough in current conditions, but this zoning adds an extra hardship, as many banks will not finance single-family residential properties that are in commercial use areas. And it's also another disincentive to preserving historic homes. I urge you to support this master plan amendment. I have a couple of pictures of some of the historic homes on the block for you to see. If I can give them to Robert?
Yes.
Maybe you can-
Thank you, Dagny.
Thank you.
Give them to Robert, please. Next, Scott Powell.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Scott Powell. I'm a homeowner in the Wells Avenue Neighborhood. I live one block away from Stewart. Couple of things I want to point out. My wife, Rosalie, is a homeowner. She came out in support with it, of this, in this meeting tonight. You read her name into the record. One thing I like about Wells Avenue is when I moved there, I loved the character. I look forward to the day when I can watch House Hunters on HGTV and see somebody trying to buy a home in the trendy Wells Avenue Neighborhood. That being said, I also want to point out for the record that the traditional border of the Wells Avenue Neighborhood is along here, Ryland, formerly known as South Street. Anyway, I also want to point out that the one person who came in opposition in this did not state whether he is a homeowner or a resident in this neighborhood as well. Under current zoning, a liquor store, a warehouse, or high-density apartments can be built in this area. To do so would destroy the character of the neighborhood and the historic homes that are there. The logical choice would be to accept the staff's recommendation that this area be rezoned and brought, excuse me, I'm not used to public speaking.
Keep going.
Okay. Anyway, it should be changed to allow a transition to preserve our neighborhood. We would welcome it back into our neighborhood if you approve this change. And finally, I want to point out that I do drive down this part of Stewart every single day on my way back to work from lunch, and I do enjoy looking at the homes along it. I would hate to see it changed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak who has not turned in a request to speak for? Yes, ma'am, if you will please come up and introduce yourself, and when you get done speaking, I'll give you three minutes. You need to fill out a white form with, and turn it in to Robert, please.
I did fill out a white form, I just didn't mark that I was going to speak, but after listening to the speakers, I wished to. My name is Sylvia Bangard, for the record. For the past forty-three years, my husband and I have lived in and owned the home in the corner of Wheeler and Moran Streets, which is about half a block from this proposal. And for all the reasons that the people, other people in favor of this have spoken, I am, I'm in favor of non-zoning. I would like to point out that, I believe it was, the name was Mr. Van Horton said angrily that zoning has everything to do with this and nothing to do with neighborhood character. I believe zoning has everything to do with neighborhood character. It seems, that sounds to me like a given. And the historic neighborhood and the preservation of it are very important to me. I've loved the work we've been doing with West of Wells restoring this. My own home is ninety-five years old. It's a marvelous old historic home. It was built by the people who owned commercial hardware and ran for many years. And one thing that has not been emphasized here, and I would like to speak about, is Stewart Park. Everybody has mentioned it, but Stewart Park is really an important thing, especially for the children of this neighborhood. As they've said, there are a lot of multi-residential areas here, and most of them don't have yards. And every evening, especially in the summer, the park is filled with children. It's a wonderful thing. And we don't want liquor stores or whatever a block away. This is part of a neighborhood, and I think these children have a right. My kids grew up at Stewart Park, and I'd like to see the other kids have a chance to have the same opportunity. But preserving this neighborhood is very, very important to me, and I think to everybody who lived here. I believe this other gentleman that was opposed said that none of us speaking owned homes here. I think everybody that's spoken owns home there. We all feel very strongly about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Sylvia, we found your request to speak form. I checked the box for you. It will be included.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I see no one else who wishes to speak. I want to make reference to an email that was forwarded to each of us planning commissioners by a Mark Taxer, who is in favor of the project. We will also add that into the meeting minutes. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the planning commission for questions and/or discussion. Commissioner Romeo?
Thank you, Chairman Wieske. I have a question for legal, Marilyn. To your knowledge, were the noticing requirements properly followed in this case?
Can't hear you down here. Speak into the mic.
You need to speak more into the mic, please, Dave. More into it.
Were the notice- Were the noticing requirements properly followed in this case?
I don't have any information regarding the noticing actions, but I have no reason to believe that they were not properly followed either.
Okay. And Nathan, briefly, two minutes. Could you give us a history of the process that was followed that initiated this change of boundaries?
Sure. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. In 2007, council had, I believe at caucus, had requested that staff sort of do an exploration of this area. Letters were sent to all the property owners in the greater area at that time to get, to get an idea of what property owner interest was. When council directed staff to initiate this, we established a neighborhood meeting. Those were noticed to the property owners and property owners within 750 feet of the extended area. After the neighborhood meeting, there was a neighborhood advisory board meeting, publicly noticed. Planning commission, depending on the recommendation of the planning commission, this would go to council, regional planning.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. And I also, Mr. Chairman, would like to bring out that in our packet, Exhibit D was not included. That included the comments from the Ward Three NAB. There are seven pieces of paper there. All seven are in support of this change. I'd like that also entered into the record of this public hearing.
Yes, Commissioner Romeo, it's done.
Thank you.
Please pass that. Any other questions? Commissioner Romeo? Commissioner Egan?
I have a question for Nathan Gilbert. Commissioner Egan? Do you know offhand which, if any, of the properties in the subject expansion area will become nonconforming under the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan? I know it was mentioned, I think, by Mr. Van Horton-
That would become nonconforming?
Yeah.
An existing nonconforming use. The largest, I believe, three, I believe three, maybe four, existing eight-unit complexes in that area. They've been nonconforming for some time before this went to DRRC. They were nonconforming. The previous zoning designation, I don't know of the previous master plan before the downtown regional center, but the previous zoning was a multifamily 30. Those were, these are small lots, eight units on .17 acres would be, would have been nonconforming when it went to DRRC. Presumably, the land use, this would be switching to the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan, it would have a sub-land use designation, master plan land use designation of MR30. Corresponding, it's confusing, the corresponding zoning designation would be multifamily 30. And so those existing apartment complexes would be existing nonconforming, but they have been even before the DRRC was established on here.
Okay. And any, so no commercial nonconforming uses, only multifamily?
There are commercial uses allowed in the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan. There's an existing office, you know, uses like childcare, neighborhood-compatible uses, childcare offices, doctor's office, those sorts of things would be able to operate or continue to operate if they're already there.
So nothing of higher intensity, is what I'm saying, that would fit into the DRRC that would not fit into the Wells Avenue?
You know, can you elaborate, what do you mean by higher intensity?
For instance, if, I know under the DRRC, there's, you know, there can be an auto use, for example. My understanding is under the Wells Avenue Plan, there's no auto uses.
That's correct. The commercial uses allowed in the West University Neighborhood Plan are limited to what were considered neighborhood-compatible with the Wells Avenue. They are-
So they'll all directly conform?
Correct.
Okay. That's my only question.
Thank you, Commissioner Egan. Any further questions? Discussion? Motion? Commissioner Romeo?
Mr. Chairman, case of LDC 08-00189, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to approve the amendments to the master plan by resolution and recommend the same to city council, subject to conformance review by regional planning. I made all the findings in 2008, and I can certainly make them in 2011.
Thank you. I have a motion. Commissioner Kaufman?
I'll second that.
Can you make the findings?
And I can make all the findings.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Remember, this is a recommendation to city council, so watch for it coming up on city council agenda. Next on our agenda is LDC 11-00052, UNRC zoning map amendment. The applicant, Vern. Please introduce himself.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a request for a zoning map amendment from AC NC, arterial commercial, neighborhood commercial, professional office, public facility, multifamily, 30 units per acre and open space to mixed-use, UNR, University of Nevada Regional Center, plan commercial on 7.42 acres to UNR, MU UNRC residential on .4 acres and MU UNRC. I'm sorry, residential? Open space, I'm skipping in the wrong place here, on about 2.07 acres. This zoning request is a result of the master plan amendment about two years ago, which took this four-block area for, out of the West University Neighborhood Plan and placed in the University of Nevada Regional Center Plan. The zoning that's being requested is consistent with the master plan designations that were approved, and in fact, they are the only zoning designations that are consistent with the master plan on the site. And this is more of a cleanup issue, just to make the master plan and zoning consistent with each other on this site. So this is just a follow-up to make this conformance issues complete. Staff is recommending approval. I do have one clarification. If you look at the colored map, it indicated that it was 7.42 acres of West University or MU West University Neighborhood Plan should be UNRC, and we've corrected that map on the version that will go to council. I just want to clarify that. Also, I received probably about seven or eight calls. Three or four were from people that were surrounding the area, wondering how this would affect them, and once I explained it to them, they were just, it was more informational. And then I received calls from a couple of people that owned property, and once they found out what was going on, they were, didn't have a problem with the change. So that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vern. All right. With that, I will open public comment. I have two cards before me. A Fred Atchison- A Fred Atchison, who is in favor of, I don't believe Fred wishes to speak. Correct me if I'm wrong? No? Okay. And Joshua Fidel, I believe is how you pronounce your last name, does not appear he wishes to make a statement. He's in favor of the application as it's been presented tonight. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak form? One at a time, please come up to the podium. When you get done, please step to your left and fill out the request to speak form. Introduce yourself. You will have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Denver Dickerson. I'm the alumni president for Signoff at Epsilon Fraternity, which is the building in the middle of Evans Park. And we would naturally be interested to, in any changes that would affect the park itself. I was at those meetings a couple of years ago and at the time, it was my understanding that this park, which was initiated by the mayor pro tem of all things 84 years ago, would remain open space. So if this is going to change any part of the park, we would like to be advised of that if it's, this zoning opens it up for other than open space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there another gentleman that wishes to speak or statements have been made? Thank you very much. Okay. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Discussion, Commissioner Newberg.
Yeah, Nathan? Oh, sorry. Vern, this is not going to mess with the park at all. It's not going to change anything about it, correct?
No, it's a city park. It's going to open space zoning. There's no intent to change the park that I'm aware of.
It's going to continue that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you. Commissioner, Chair Wieski, I have a motion?
Commissioner Newberg, please.
In regards to LDC 1100052, UNRC zoning map amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
I have a motion. Commissioner Egan?
I second the motion. I can make the findings.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda is item number four, TXT 09-00001, West Fourth Street TOD, also known as TOD, zoning map and text amendment. Nathan, please introduce yourself. Podium is yours.
Thank you, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. 2008, the city council adopted an extension of the West Fourth Street Transit Corridor out to the area of Gold Ranch. It's the area illustrated here in the overhead. This, what we're proposing tonight is a zoning map amendment and text amendment to implement the policies established in that plan extension and assign zoning that is consistent and compatible with the master plan land use designations. You may recall, the intent for the areas identified in yellow and green, different residential and open space designations, were to keep them as they are now. So, and then the area that the master plan, the area in crosshatch here is areas that the master plan identifies as tourist commercial gateway. That would be a mixed-use based zoning land use designation that would be modified with the overlay. The overlay, the text amendments regarding to the overlay only affect this mixed-use area here. So again, this is about conformance with the master plan, pretty much, except for this area here along the river, keeping its status quo. This is currently HC designation, CC land use. All of those uses would be permitted and continue in the MU. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. With that, I will ask for disclosures. Are there any disclosures? No? I will open public comment. Robert, do we have any requests to speak forms?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to speak on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, I close public comment. Bring it back to the commission for comments, discussion, and/or motion. Commissioner Woosley?
Chair Wieski, I'd like to make a motion. Case number TXT 09-0001, based on the compliance of the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendments and text amendments by ordinance. I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Egan?
Commissioner Egan, I'd second that motion. I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda item is item number eight, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. I can tell you that we did not have a meeting last month. We will have a meeting next Wednesday night and also the following Wednesday night, the 17th of May, will be a special regional planning commission meeting. That's what's upcoming. That's it for item number eight. Item number nine, discussion of potential direction to staff regarding setbacks for solar and wind structure. Vern, since you're the last man standing?
Vern Close, Senior Planner.
Do you have an update for us?
An update? Well, I have Jason Geddes here with our environmental, I don't know what your title is, but...
Thank you, Jason.
He can fill you in on what the legislature is doing.
Can you bring your title with you, please?
Thank you. Jason Geddes, Environmental Services Administrator for the City of Reno. Happy to answer any questions you have. I can give you a brief update as to what's going on down in the legislature. There is currently one bill looking at the setback issues. It's AB 122, brought by Assemblyman Livermore from Carson City. The bill was brought forward. It's been amended twice in the assembly and it had its first hearing today in the Senate. There was several people testifying in support and opposition, neutral with suggestions on the bill and the various aspects of the bill. The committee chair and Assemblyman Livermore agreed to set up a working group to come up with a bill that everybody could agree on. The working group is meeting tomorrow to look at the setback issues, the various issues for both solar and wind, and to try and come up with a compromise bill to bring forward to the group. The basic elements of the bill right now, the two areas, as it was amended, it added into code beyond what we already have to look at aesthetics, which was actually more narrowly defined as appearance. Reno Code deals with that with color and how shiny it is, with exceptions that can be made by the department. There's also, the amendments today brought by the City of Henderson looked at putting in specific codes for height, setback, noise levels, very similar to what we have in our code. And that led to a lot of the discussion as the various jurisdictions who have already adopted have set different limits for height and setback and noise levels. So it's trying to find out where those areas are. And then in both situations, they put in the option that individual jurisdictions could require a special use permit as part of it, as opposed to having the standards that are out there. That's probably one of the more controversial parts of it, mainly because the original bill that was put in and the law that was put in was to take it out of the special use permit process and allow the jurisdictions to set up local standards so it would become a building permit that could be approved if it was in conformance. So that's kind of the update of where the legislation's at and I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding it.
Thank you, Jason. Max, I'm going to start with you because last month, you had a question regarding glare. When we were talking about putting this on the agenda, do you want to ask Jason about it now or do you want to wait and see what state comes up with?
No, I mean, I guess I could just throw out a quick review of some of the comments. We've had a number of these projects come up over the last year and a half and most often now, it's been large solar arrays on religious facilities, churches and so forth. So it's, it seems to be that the opposition comes from the local residents and they're concerned about the color, especially the glare, the reflectivity. You know, at certain times of day, is it going to shine right into my front windows? And, you know, we haven't been really clear in terms of how we might condition those or what other options we might have and that's one of the things we've all, we've been looking at. The other, another thing you might put a comment on too, we've had some discussion about backyard wind turbines and both the size and noise and so forth. So I guess some review for our benefit of what are existing city standards and setbacks and restrictions and what sort of things we might be able to consider while reviewing these sorts of proposals in the future would be helpful. And then I think that's sort of the background that the chairman's looking for.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sure. And as far as the solar goes, the basic issue, the one major restriction that is in the state law is that you can't unreasonably restrict it and that definition is more than 10% reduction in output of the system. So you are allowed to talk about the angle of the panels. Our code in the city does establish screening that you can put around the panels to inhibit the view of the panels from someone else, as long as it doesn't interfere with more than 10% of that, of the output of the system. At one point in time, they did put in colors and filming to knock down glare or to make them caracotta colored or black colored so they more fit in if they were roof mounted. Those got stripped out of the last session because those were found to be in excess of that 10% capacity. Actually, the, yeah, it was the '09 session. So you are allowed to restrict the view of the solar system and put things in. And the one thing you could look at on the panels, you know, the ideal panel positioning is 37-degree angle so that you're matching our latitude and that optimizes on the sun for those fixed panels. You can look at lowering those angles as long as that angle drop doesn't get you into more than the 10% drop in capacity. And for a lot of the roof-mounted systems, if you look at them, they are sitting more at a 10 to 15-degree angle because you don't want to get into wind shear issues and get them too high up. And when you're down at 10 to 15, you generally don't run into those glare issues that are the concern that's out there. One other issue that might come up, and in some areas, the airport authority has talked about not putting them within certain areas around the landing strip because of the glare issue with airplanes landing. They haven't put in anything in that regards, but they've talked about it back and forth. I know the City of Denver has addressed that as they put in a big array around the Denver Airport. So that may be something to look at if you wanted to address that issue as well. It's interesting, in the, in the law change, it is only for non-residential properties that are adjacent to residential properties where they're talking about putting in the stronger restrictions. So it was meant to address the issue in Carson City where they placed it on a middle school and what the setbacks were and how that affected view. There wasn't a glare issue there. It was just the residents looking at the panels and that becomes more of the issue where the law says you shouldn't judge it based on the appearance or the view. And as Senator Settlemeyer brought up today, there is no laws in Nevada to date giving you protection to your view, although Marilyn may be able to correct me if I went over there. But the LCV attorneys agreed with that, that there's no way to say, you know, because it destroys my view, it is a take, you know, or it's a wrong. And that applied both to the solar and the wind. So that would be one thing to put in there and look at that. When you get into the wind, it is more, it gets more tricky. There was a lawsuit in Carson City around the solar panels. The federal judge, or the judge down there, said that they couldn't reject that one because it was in conformance with the rules. There was a lawsuit up here in a homeowners association with a wind turbine and the judge in that case found that anything over, I think it was 15 feet or five decibels, was considered a nuisance. That's currently on appeal in the courts. Five decibels is very quiet, very quiet. It's less than a whisper. So that's kind of being adjudicated and they're trying to get the law clear on that point. And some of the things that we saw in the draft today was setting up how high you could be and how much the setback would be, decimal levels of property line, and then appearance, color, glazing. And the proposal today set different standards for one-acre, five-acre, 20-acre lots and so forth. But they're, they're just trying to see where you should go with that. The general history in the law that's out there and coming forward is trying not to treat wind turbines and solar panels any different than you would any other structure. So, you know, I have these big old metal rickety water pumping wind turbines in my yard because I think they look cool. And I've got the 12-foot one and an 8-foot one and I can put them anywhere and there's no code to that. But if it was generating electricity, it would fall into a different code. You know, flagpoles are allowed to be in based on our height requirement, satellite dishes. The idea is just to make sure you're not singling out the wind turbines because they are wind turbines. But you are allowed to put reasonable restrictions on it. We will really see through AB 122 what the legislature considers reasonable and what they're going to put out as the reasonable guidelines. But right now, it's up to you as local jurisdiction to determine what that reasonable is.
Jason, thank you for the update. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Woosley?
I just want to piggyback on what Commissioner Halton was talking about as far as, you know, where these are starting to become forests and that's great. We want to see these solar. We want to see the wind turbines. In fact, the wind turbines are probably going to be growing a lot here, hopefully in the future. And just like what you're doing, keeping us up to date on that, because we'd like to, you know, like to see subdivisions have this built into them and, you know, residential where it becomes a popular thing to do. And it just seems like everybody's like, well, I'm not sure the rules, I'm not sure the heights and there's a lot of gray area. But I know that's what you're working on right now. So these updates are fantastic.
Yeah, I'm happy to come back and once we get the AB 122 results out of the Senate, I'll bring that back to you and let you know what they're thinking there. A couple more things to think of that, just as you're thinking of it and going forward, is the one-size-fits-all. Because when they wrote those laws and they were talking about height and setback, there's this mindset of, you know, the turbine on a pole sitting in someone's yard, but it didn't accommodate things like the wind turbines we have in top city hall here where, you know, it's a 240-foot building. The wind turbines are only 18-foot high, but technically, we wouldn't be in compliance to those laws because we were already sitting at 240 feet before we mount them. Setback from property line doesn't make that much sense. You know, we've mounted them to the iron structure of the building and it's best to be on the property line and in the middle of that iron structure. And, you know, the acre requirement, one of the restrictions in there was no more than one wind turbine per acre. But, you know, when you're talking to a commercial building, it doesn't make a lot of sense if you can put five or six of them up there and get more production out of it. And in some of the cases, it made it kind of difficult with the law. There's those two houses right down in Pleasant Valley, you can see off to the left, and they each have two wind spires sitting in their yard. And that would not be allowable because it's two turbines per yard. There are only 1.2 KW turbines, so it's, you know, two of those is enough to do about 30, 40% of your house. You could put one 10 KW according to these systems, but not these two smaller ones to it. So it's, it is just trying to think of that as we want to put things in. And as they become more efficient, quieter, Honeywell just came out with a brand-new turbine that can operate down to three, four mile per hour wind based on one of their jet turbine designs. And it's sitting in a nice cone. It kind of looks like a homemade jet engine and it, but it could be very productive in a proper setting. So it is just making sure that you're not restricting it based on the mindset of the 60-foot pole and the three-blade, but there are a lot of new technologies and you address that. But I'll make sure and bring the reports back once out of the Senate and then if the assembly sign, pass it and the governor, I'll bring that back as well.
Thank you, Jason. Would you stay in contact with Claudia? And if there's something coming up for our June or July agendas, I'd be more than happy to move you up to the front of the agenda so you don't have to sit through all the projects. But I think that would be very helpful to all of us because my concern when I brought it up was setback distances. You know, now we've talked about noise, we've talked about glare and visual and we just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, both for the community and future planning. Commissioner Halton, you had one more question?
One more quick follow-up and if you can't answer it, maybe Marilyn can. But what happens when the city code or the, or state law in this case comes in conflict with the CCNRs or the HOA guidelines? You know, I'm thinking in some cases, if the HOA or the CCNRs are more restrictive, then those, you know, prevail unless the, you know, unless the state law or the zoning specifically prohibits the HOA from prohibiting it. specifically prohibits the H O A from prohibiting it, right? I mean, how...
Actually, the way the state law in regards to these are written, it is separate for H O A and non-H O A properties. So what I've been talking about in this case has been all of the non-H O A information. H O As are allowed to put in tighter restrictions, and the law's a little tighter on that. There are no bills right now looking at changing the H O A requirements, none of the bills in the legislature are looking at doing that. They do have different acreages, like for the non-H O A, you're allowed a wind turbine on any size property. In the H O A, it has to be at least two acres. The H O A is also allowed to put in what they consider reasonable restrictions that could be tighter than the city has, but they do have to codify that in the homeowners' association rules and regulations. So they do have to put that in there, they can't rule on it case by case, unless they do put in a provision that says we can, these are the guidelines, but you can ask for an exception to the guidelines. So they are treated differently in the N R S. Right now, they have their own set, and that's what they're adhering to.
Perfect. That's always a gray space for us, because sometimes people will come up and complain about something that has nothing to do with planning commission, it's really an H O A issue, and it's nice to know where the line is, so, thank you.
Surely.
Thank you, Jason. See you soon.
Okay.
Next on our agenda, staff announcements. Report on status of planning division projects.
I have no comments on any of those subsequent items on the agenda.
Thank you. Item, next on our agenda is item number eleven, then. Commissioner's suggestion for future agenda items. Hearing and seeing none? That's a good question. I guess we could have a future agenda item to have Robert return next month for his final This is Robert's final meeting. He will, he is retiring, as I have been told, so congratulations to Robert. Thank you for all you've done for this planning commission over the years.
And the N A Bs and every other commission that you worked on.
Yes. Thank you very much. You will be sorely missed by this group, because we enjoy poking fun with you.
It's been, it's been quite a fifteen-year journey with the planning commission and other boards and commissions. I've learned a lot, got to know a lot more about the city.
Would you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, would you?
Okay, that was your, that was your dig.
Thank you.
I got the last one.
Oh, we're not done yet, you haven't gambled it out yet. Anyway, Marilyn wants me to behave, but I don't think that's going to happen, so, anyway, it's been a great fifteen years, an amazing second career for me. Who knew I could end up doing something like this? But it's been great fun, and like I say, I have learned a lot about the workings of planning and that, and found out about things that were going on downtown, and that brought me back downtown. So it's been fun, and I've enjoyed every minute of it.
Well, stop by and say hi sometime. Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.